Okay.
Waiting for Curtis to give us a thumbs up.
All right, we're good to go.
Great, thank you Curtis. Welcome everybody to the Building Use and Visioning Committee September 30th meeting. It's our first meeting of the 25, 26 school year. Thank you all for being here. So let's go ahead and we had an agenda set out last week, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Also, thank you for linking the minutes to our last meeting, which was March 11th. Did not seem that long ago, but I've been looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 11, 2025.
I'll make that motion too.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thanks Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we need to designate a recording secretary for the meeting. Mike, how does this usually work? I don't recall us doing this last.
We usually have somebody who takes the minutes, it's just to formalize who's doing that.
I'm terrible at that. That's my excuse. Emily looks like she's really good.
Is that, yes Emily, I got it?
Emily is so good at no.
You know what, I'm not on the committee, so I'll do it.
Thank you Steve.
I appreciate that sir. Always wonderful. Okay, well Steve Rosenberg will be the recording secretary for the meeting. For the board members present, we have Ashley Woods, Chair, myself JB Weir, we have Steve Rosenberg from Moretown. And we have Emily Doloff as well from Duxbury, right? I don't see Cindy here, is that right?
She might be coming, but carry on. I'm gonna text her right now to make sure she knows how to do it.
And then of the, whether we have Dr. Mike and Ray Diggle, her maintenance, Lisa Essler, our CFO. And then members of the public, we have Cam, David and Caleb from TruX. Thanks a lot guys for taking the time again to join us. And I'm gonna see here, I can't see.
It looks like eight members of the public, including our reporter from the Waterbury Roundabout.
Okay.
So we have basically seven members of the public plus the press.
Okay, sounds good. Great, okay. So I'm just gonna, we're gonna open up a public comment for the next 15 minutes or so if members of the public wish to speak. I'm just gonna add before, if there are any, I do have, the meeting is gonna go to 7:30. I do have a hard stop right around then. I am single parenting this week and I need to get to Waterbury to pick up my daughter. So, but I think we can do it. I think we can stick to the agenda even if we're a couple of minutes late. So I guess, yes, I'd like to open it up to the public and see if they had any sort of comments before the meeting is going.
So if you have any comments, just raise your virtual hand and we will promote you to a panelist and recognize you. So we have Beth, Catherine Naden, Haley Mango, Langford Davidson, Miesh Rens, who's a teacher at Moretown, Nicole Angel and Sparty. And JB, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Great, okay, well, that's good. I'm sure we'll have more questions. I think we received this report last week. It looks, it's very detailed and I think it's a great body of work from TruX. I think, you know, we're kinda here this evening to go over it with TruX's lens on to see how it came to be, what they put into it. And what we're gonna, our next steps after that. So I think, I'm sure we'll have, all have lots of questions at upcoming meetings. So I appreciate the public being here and urge them all to continue to come to these meetings because we know questions will arise. So, great. Well, with that, let's get into the meat of the meeting and that's reviewing and discussing the facilities assessment. Assessments with the presentation by TruX Collins and I'll give you guys the floor.
Great, thanks. Hi everyone. Caleb's gonna walk us through the presentation. The, and you can stop at any time. We, you know, the process was that we assembled a team of engineers, we visited the schools. We wrote, each engineer wrote their report for the areas they were responsible for. And we'll be releasing a full written report that will have even more detail than what you see tonight. So if you ever have trouble sleeping, this is a great document. No, it's really full of information. But I just wanna remind everybody, it's a snapshot in time. You know, there might be work done tomorrow or the summer or whatever that, you know, is on the list here. Sometimes things arise that aren't on, in the report. So, you know, bear that in mind, the, the dollar amounts. So what we've done is in the report, there's the, each item is described. Then its condition is described and then there's a recommendation for if there's any upgrades required. And what we're, what we're looking for is what we, in generic, generically say, you know, these are the things that would modernize the building. Either it's, and there's three categories. There's priority one and two and three and Caleb will go into that in more detail. But we're looking at a wide range of things from code compliance, accessibility, building condition, deferred maintenance, aging equipment, the full gamut and happy to take you through it. So Caleb, do you wanna share your screen?
And David, can I ask you, so my experience has been to go through this process as part of a grand overall master planning process. So could you explain in an ideal world how this would fit into both a school district facility master plan? And then subsequently, a school master plan and construction project?
Yeah, so the, this, it's pretty comprehensive and it's an important part of planning for the future. Because you wanna know what, what the deferred maintenance is on the projects. And it establishes a baseline. Often, school district will say, well, you know, if you get into like modification of a building, they'll wanna know, well, what would it just cost to fix the building that we have? And that's what this gives you. This is just, there's no, the numbers you see don't include in moving any walls or changing any configurations. Just here's what you have and here's what it takes to bring it up to a modern standard in terms of performance and, you know, newer equipment so that you're, and, and, and so what happens is when you do a major facilities project, you may not, you may not decide to do all of it, you may decide to do some of it. And the rest of it would go into a capital improvement plan. So you would say, okay, we're not gonna do the windows now, but we're gonna do them in five years or 10 years. And then you could start scheduling out and create a plan for taking care of the buildings over the long term. One of the reasons it's important is that when you do the facility, like we were just working on a project in another school district and there was one wing that was completely, needed a complete gut renovation and when we did the master planning, it turns out they wanted to reconfigure how their classrooms were set up. So it became an ideal, well, it doesn't really cost much more if you're gonna go to that level of, of, you have that level of deferred maintenance to move some walls around and get what you really want. So it helps you optimize your solutions and your investments.
Great, thank you.
Never anyone see my screen?
There it is.
Yes.
Okay, so this is kind of a breakdown of our project team. Brooks Collins as the architect and team leader. Our list of consultants, civil engineering, engineering ventures, structural engineering, also engineering ventures. Our electrical, mechanical and plumbing engineers, all from Engineering Services of Vermont. And their cost estimation team was PM and C, messages. So yeah, David kind of described what the initial process was. We, we took, over a course of three days, we visited the schools and kind of jotted down all of our observations that we would then take back to the office in order to put down our recommendations for monitor, monitor, modernization of the schools. Some key terms that we'll need to know as we go through this report. A list of priorities, you'll see that the, the lists of items will be broken up into one of three priorities. One, priority one being items related to health, safety, welfare code. Priority two, which are items that are at the end of their useful life or expected lifespan. Or upgrades that will be significant, say for energy savings. And then priority three is any priorities that don't really fit into those two categories, but could help improve maybe functionality of the school. FCI, you'll see, is, FCI stands for the Facility Condition Index. And it's, it's a ratio of deferred maintenance over current replacement value. I mean, it gives you a percentage overall, basically what's left of the building. And then, so to explain these FCI, zero to five, new or well-maintained condition, little or no evidence of wear or deficiencies, five through 10 would be subject to wear, but still in serviceable condition. And then 10 through 30, subject to hard long-term wear, nearing end of its useful life. And then 30 or above, it's recommended that it's basically that it's reached its end, end of its useful life and it's now, renewal is now necessary. I mean, this came from the Vermont Education Act 72 Facilities Assessment. So that's where we got this information of how they're classifying these FCI numbers, basically for the whole entire state. And so kind of a quick breakthrough, just a snapshot for the schools that we visited. Brookside, Crossit Brook, Faceton, Moretown, Waitsfield, Warren. We didn't, as part of this investigation, we did not visit Harwood. This, I think this was done a few years prior, so you won't see any of that information in this, this report. But this gives you kind of just a breakdown of what grades go to these schools, number of students, building size. I think one thing to note is just the average years or how many years it's been since the last major renovation in some of these schools. An average of 23 years, so. And this is kind of a snapshot of overall how the, how the cost estimate came back. We'll get kind of more into detail with these numbers, but you can see kind of the, the FCI Facility Conditions Index here on the right. Few schools kind of reaching that 30% range, Faceton being a bit over. And then some within, yeah, 17% range. But then you, so this, you can see that the cost estimate came back as say 48 million. Basically, if we were to pair everything that was, that we found wrong with the schools. And then this is a number that, basically taking an estimate for square foot cost for a new construction build would be about 200 million to, to replace all the buildings. And so you take those and divide it and you end up with a 24% overall FCI. We'll get rid of it. Starting with Brookside School, so yeah, grades pre-K through fourth grade, 345 students. Approximately 76,000 square foot building, sitting on a 10 acre lot. The, kind of originally built in three sections, kind of this central area built in, that's 1900. And then two, two additional wings in 1912 and 1937. And then the most recent addition being 2007, where kind of these connectors between these, these three areas. And so priority one, items that we have established. For architectural, there's a lot, there's some exterior windows that have areas of rot. You can see this photo here at the bottom. It's kind of rotting right through the, the style. Door knobs that really should be replaced with lever hardware, just they're not ADA accessible. There's a lot of wired glass in either door, door vision lights or oral lights, which would be like a side light to an interior door. That, that's no longer allowed by code. It's just a safety hazard. Lot of exposed P-traps at restroom vanities. Classroom doors do not have door closers, which is required by code now. They really should have closers and then doors could be held open on magnetic hold opens. You can see in this photo here, some egress handrails that really aren't up to code, just with dimension, but they're other can reconfigure, they really should have a return on all the handrails. And then some ADA issues, clearances at kind of different doors throughout the office areas. Plumbing fixtures at classrooms are not accessible. They don't have the right clearances around, so to say like the casework sinks. One ramp at the, kind of goes down to the basement area is too steep. Electrical issues, automatic transfer swish, switch is not properly secured. Some open electrical boxes found in the attic spaces. And you'll see a lot of these electrical ones are actually fairly consistent between schools. Plug strips used as permanent wiring, which should not be. Tamperproof receptacles, any new receptacles by code now really have to be tamperproof in an education building. GF, GF CI receptacles not labeled correctly.
It's, it's worth noting that, you know, the codes have changed. So that, you know, this building was designed and it met the codes and now the codes have, have changed. In the case of like handrails and things, you know, you're, you have a certificate of occupancy and you're grandfathered in. But sometimes when you do major work to a building, that sort of triggers code compliance and across a wider spectrum of, of issues that even you might have originally anticipated, so they'll. So anyway, it's just something to be considered. It's not, when, when we're talking about some of these code issues, it's, it was designed and it met code at the time and the codes have changed over the time.
A few more additional priority one items. For mechanical and plumbing, the kitchen hood is not UL listed or it really needs a fire suppression system by code. And then sprinkler heads should be tested. Some structural items, some concrete piers kind of along that back gym area had some kind of some cracked sonotubes here. Exterior concrete stairs and handrails, and I think this is actually, this work was completed. Ray had brought that up to us, got delete that. Exterior walkway support steel, kind of in, in the back of the school, there's a couple of steel beams that are temporary support, temporarily supported and have some significant deterioration here, you can see in this image in the right. Some civil items. Really should add some signage and pavement markings to help direct traffic just for public safety. And then some trimming of vegetation at entry drives just to increase visibility. And then there's some areas of sidewalks that have settling panels that just don't meet code. Based on that, you can only have a half an inch of drop in order to meet ADA code. Some priority two items for Brookside. And you'll see that the majority of the items will be in this kind of priority two list with, with items that are just deteriorating and kind of are at their end of useful life. So you'll, you'll kind of notice that as we go through. So architecturally, the, the envelope, just based on building, the date that it was built, it does not meet energy code to current standards. Standing, there's a, some areas of standing c metal roofing at the gym area, kind of at the back storage area that's, that's rusted and really should be replaced. Exterior wood doors that are here to be original, they're in pretty poor condition. Some exterior hall metal doors and frames that have rusting at the bases. You see in this image on the right, some rotted post spaces at the entry columns, should be replaced, repaired. Healing paint exterior wood trim, damaged fibers in that paneling here, these connector pit areas. BTC flooring, which is cracked or separating at joints. Wood flooring that's worn and should be refinished just to help protect that flooring. Areas of casework that is worn and or not ADA accessible and then areas of damaged ceiling tiles. For electrical fluorescent, there's, I think majority of these schools have been relamped. But there are still some areas of fluorescent lighting. Some mechanical and plumbing items. The boilers at the school are close to their, end of their life. The fuel oil tank.
Aye.
Hi, sorry to, sorry to interrupt Caleb. I just wanted to remind everybody that the presentation was included in the warrant agenda. And I think for the sake of time and allowing some questions from the committee and other members here at the meeting that we maybe moved through this a little bit quicker. I don't mean, it's all important stuff. But, but the president, you know, I think that the report, the initial report here speaks for itself. So maybe just going over some, some of the more highlights.
Okay, I can do the major items for sure. Let's see. I think structurally, there's a couple of areas at the school where the, you can see these window sills have kind of become displaced. And I think overall, this building should be repointed, just you see some of this brick here that is deteriorating just because of the age of the mortar and once the mortar kind of goes bad, it's, it then affects the brick. So I think just to help protect the brick itself. And then priority three items, this, this will be kind of similar for all of them. Let's see. Kind of minor crack, structural cracking, that's not really necessary to kind of move on right now, but should be monitored. And then kind of just a breakdown of the cost here, 16 million worth of repairs here at Brookside with an FCI of 26. Moving on to Crossit Brook, originally built in 1996 and really hasn't had a, kind of worked done since then. Um, let's see, some major items here. There's some sofa damage to the library that really should be taken a look at just because it could be affected from maybe a roof, roof leak. Lot of very similar electrical items here. Structurally, there's some rusting at the entry columns that should be refurbished before they, they get too far gone. In some spalling concrete at these entry steps. And then some, some major potholes in the pavement, it's just a safety hazard. Once again, the envelope, this doesn't meet energy code. A lot of very similar items throughout these schools, just based on how they've been renovated over the years. Need new boilers, should have a new oil tank. Water valves and piping specially, specialties are at the end of their life. See, yeah, for Crossit Brook, it was a $10 million cost estimate. 17% FCI, which is the lowest of all the schools. Makes sense, just being the newest school.
Yeah, it's worth noting that the, you know, the FCI's in this district quite a bit lower than in other districts, which I say kudos to Ray and the whole team in terms of taking care of the buildings. You know, we were, you know, we, it, it caused us to dig a little bit deeper and to make sure that our numbers were accurate. We, we double checked them with Ray and so, but, you know, get, having them all be except for Faceton, you know, under 30 in Vermont is, is on the low side, even though it's significant, you know. When you're at 25% FCI, that means 25% of the, the building is depreciated and needs, you know, needs renewal. So it's not insignificant, but, but not as bad as some other districts, so. Good luck to you folks.
A lot of kudos to Ray and his, his amazing work. Emily, I do see you raise your hand. I think what we'll do is, is wanna get TruX time to get through this presentation and maybe we'll save, shoot to save about 10 to 15 minutes if we can, maybe a little after 7 o'clock for, for any questions from the members. Okay, thanks.
And I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be sobering, but although this district has some buildings that are in better shape than others we have visited around the state. If you go back at some point and look at the slide on FCI, you know, 30% FCI is considered critical. And, you know, many institutional organizations like universities or the military will consider replacement at a FCI of 40 or 50%. So just take that with a grain of salt. Yes, people have done a good job and you're ahead of the curve, but there's still a lot of work to be done.
Moving on to Faceton, originally built in 1962 and there's, yeah, this building has kind of had a bunch of different smaller additions over the years. Kind of some major items here. Yeah, some more white, a lot of wired glass at the school as well. Exterior windows kind of not having proper flashing, which can lead to issues with moisture getting into the walls. Entry column, post spaces which are rusting. This wooden site wall that we saw while on site has kind of collapsed, is collapsing. The, the fire alarm system for this school is one of the major items. The, the system's no longer manufactured, so replacement parts are, will be hard to find if something were to go wrong. So it's recommended to replace this system. Again, the kitchen hood should be replaced, do a code compliant system. For Faceton, the envelope really, it doesn't meet energy code and doesn't have a proper air barrier system. The exterior siding really is, isn't in the greatest shape. It's definitely pretty worn. Some of the standing c metal roofing should be replaced. And then some of the older era aluminum windows should also be replaced, kind of past their end of useful life. Some damage, kind of EPH siding material at the gym, gym walls. And then you're, both kind of flooring issues and ceiling issues. Also have central HRV unit should be replaced or at the end of their useful life. And then unit ventilators to classrooms are also at the end of useful life. Some just minor, minor structural cracking that should be monitored as priority three. And so overall, at Faceton, it was Um, so overall, at Facetown, it was a seven million dollar cost estimate. But being a smaller school, it's, it's only fifteen million re, for replacement, so the FCI of forty nine percent. Um, for Moretown School, um, originally built, there was a kind of a, the front area built in nineteen hundred and then. A couple of different additions, kind of nineteen sixty, nineteen ninety six. Which added the majority of the school as it sits today. Some priority one items, uh, once again, handrails um. There's some, some egress issues, kind of locations of the drinking fountain's a little bit dangerous, someone's opening that door. Um, and then just moving, maneuvering clearances as far as getting into classrooms with a wheelchair. Not accessible. Some of the priority two items um. Some rotting, rotting siding, siding damaged, trim um, kind of at this, this older era. Building, um, some original wood doors that really should be replaced just. For their shape and also just for energy efficiency um. Elemental doors that are rusting, a lot of, lot of similar things. Um, for this school, the electrical equipment is actually nearing end of its useful life, so that's a pretty good cost for this school um. And then, yeah, mechanical unit ventilators are at the end of their useful life as well. So, yeah, Moretown came in at four point eight million, twenty seven percent FCI. Waitsfield, um, built nineteen sixty three with a few different additions. The most recent renovation, I guess, was the kitchen in twenty three. Um, so priority one items here. Awesome doors without door closers, a lot of wired glass um. Fuel up, electrical code issues that should be revised, um, just how, how the wiring is um routed. There was a few classrooms um. In this school that were noted to have just low lighting levels. And then fire alarm signal, signal coverage wasn't quite adequate, um, it should be a few more. Into the school. Architecturally, a lot of the same items, um, envelope isn't quite up to energy code for the whole building um. Areas of uh displaced mortar at the brick. Think some of this work had been completed this summer, um, some of the wood entry posts and trim at the main entry. And then so, yes, flooring, ceilings in poor condition, interior wood doors have delamination. And then circuit breaker panels. At the original area of this building should be replaced or at their useful life. Boiler should be replaced, unit ventilator should be replaced. And then the nineteen sixty three domestic water piping has had several failures, so really should be replaced as well before it becomes an issue. Any further? Couple structural issues of unsupported CMU. And so overall, the school came in at um an estimate of four point eight million for repairs with a twenty four percent FCI. And then um Warren.
So if you don't want to, I jump in just real quick, Caleb, I, I just have to say. And, and I appreciate all your comments too and the other architects. I just spent two days at the Warren School and uh when you look at the pictures, you're not seeing teachers, you're not seeing kids. And having spent two days at this school, like all of our other schools, the school is about teachers, it's about students, it's about instruction. And I have to say, from working in three school systems, that our schools are some of the most caring places I've worked in. Um, so when you see the pictures and you see the issues, I just ask that people watching remember that. Schools are not just brick and mortar, you know, schools are about. How we treat each other, how we treat students, how we educate our students, but they're an important part of that equation, so. Uh, what, I, I think it was Cam who said, you know, when you pull up to a school and you look at the building and you're dropping your child off. Or you're coming in for a meet the teacher night, you don't see these things, but they are part of the equation and they're part of the infrastructure, so. Um, I think when you look at these pictures, you think, oh, I kind of saw that, I didn't really notice that. In, in the whole and, and the needs that are there, but I just remind people that this is just part of that full discussion. And uh something to keep in mind as we talk, not just in Harwood, but across the state about the condition of our buildings that. Uh, we're not commenting on anything about education because in my opinion um. Education we're providing in many of our school and most of our schools and all of our schools are second to none, but these are things that keep. The work going, uh, last year or last week, we had a, an issue with some rain and some water in the one of the roofs in uh Brookside. And uh, I think this is just making sure that our buildings are maintained in a way. That helps us and helps our teachers provide a quality education for our students, so. I know I'm rambling on a bit, but when I see the pictures, I have to stop a moment and realize that this is not connected to our overall mission. It's just connected to uh the infrastructure of our schools.
Thanks, Mike. I was, was thinking the same, that's very important. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so yeah, lastly, Warren, um, built in ninety, nineteen seventy one, um, a few different additions over the years. And this, this school actually um overall had, was renovated in twenty seventeen for a deep. I guess uh retro fit for the exterior, um, bringing that up to energy code. Um, some priority one items um. Let's see. Yeah, you can see wired glass at doors, door hardware, um, just accessibility issues with doorknobs. Um, this one structural crack at the um level one or level two floor slab. Level one floor slab that should be investigated. And I think one of the bigger issues here was the, the fire pump room really should be in its own one hour enclosed room. And then the, the pump itself really isn't accessible. Doesn't have the, the correct clearances, that should be, should be um revised.
And, and again, other than Ray, Skip, myself and the fire inspector, I don't think anyone has ever seen this piece, but it's. Important part of the, again, keeping in mind that uh we got to keep our buildings running for students.
And then, so priority two items, um. Yeah, overall, the exterior was in pretty great shape, um, a little bit at some areas where there's some kind of typical maintenance issues with. Some damage at that corner trim, um, some, some cleaning that needs to be done, so kind of routine maintenance things um. Some areas of flooring that kind of were in rough shape in some of the restrooms um. Gym wall padding was in poor condition, but then some casework that's really in poor condition. See here in these images. Boilers at the end of their useful life. And then the gym, the gym H, HRU in this, this building is really undersized. For the school. Then some priority three items here, you can see kind of these physical panels that are kind of stained, not really priority, but. Could help up the appearance of the school. Um, some kind of light structural cracking, so this school came in at um, just over four million for repairs. Whether that's the I V team.
It's worth mentioning that these numbers are um stated in two thousand twenty seven. Number, so we've escalated them at four percent a year from today's to. Twenty twenty seven, so that, you know, because the likelihood of, you know. Getting any of this work done is probably not a couple, not for a couple of years, so we wanted to. Didn't want to state it in today's dollars and have you be surprised when you start to do the work, it costs more. Um, but it could be, you know, we just wanted you to be aware of that.
I don't know, Ashley, I saw those names earlier today written on the floor down in the basement and I think I saw your daughter's name down there. It's not in the rest of the building, but it is uh one spot in the building, which is one of the fun parts.
I think my name's in there too, actually.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, I left there in eighty one, so, or eighty, nineteen eighty, yeah.
Um, yeah, we put together this little uh facility comparison matrix to kind of compare all the schools. Um, and it's, it's really um. Uh, we, we kind of went through and so green means that it exists or is it sufficient size or condition? Yellow meaning it, it exists, but could be either undersized or in poor condition. And then red meaning that it's either failed or doesn't exist at all.
And, and I'll just say for folks, you know, there's no judgment in, in this, we, we sometimes get, you know, some folks have reactions to this. And, and it's, it's a reductive matrix, um, you know, intentionally to sort of. Uh, call out where the major programming differences are from building to building um. So. For, for what it is, it's, it's useful in these discussions.
Yeah, just kind of a recap of costs um. I think. That's pretty much the end of our presentation um. I can leave it here if anybody wants to kind of.
Did we um, did we benchmark the? The, the, the budgeting with the APPA, is that slide?
Right here, David.
Yeah, do you want to walk through this slide?
Yeah, so this um. This uh table is giving us um basically replacement value. Um, which is what we're using to calculate our uh FCI um cost. So basically for um an annual maintenance budget um. It, so if you're adding up your, your. Your maintenance budget and routine maintenance, it should really come to three percent of your annual budget, which is this number, this column here.
Um, no, three, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to jump in Caleb, but it's three percent of current replacement value. Um, as opposed to three percent of your, so um. Yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, but it's, it's uh, uh, the one percent and two percent add up to three percent of current replacement value. Which is typically a lot more than what people are actually budgeting.
So, yeah, this, and this is the Association of Physical Plan Administrators, this is a um. A, a reference that we got from the Agency of Education. Um, there, they've been using this to sort of benchmark and they're considering, you know, one of the things they're concerned about is. If there's going to be a school construction aid program, um, they want to make sure that whatever um. Project is being developed that the school district budgets adequately to take care of it, so into the future. Um, this is something that Rhode Island does, Rhode Island um looks at. A school's maintenance budget when they're deciding to give money and negotiating all that and. So we thought it would, it's, it's an, it's a interesting, an important benchmark to understand like what you, you're. So according to this, you're budgeting uh four point two. The APPA's recommendation is ten uh million, so there's, you know, it's quite a gulf there um. The second, the next column where it says capital renewal, the, the four percent is um really talking about like if you didn't. Bond, if you said that we're never going to bond and we're just going to budget, then they're recommending you add another four percent, which is essentially. If you think about it, replacing, you know, four percent a year is like every twenty five years, you've completely renewed your facilities. That, cause four times twenty five is a hundred um. So it's kind of a hypothetical to say like, if, if you decide not to bond um. And you decide to just budget, then you have to add another four percent for a total of seven percent um, the uh. But what we know from the study that we did in the spring, when we did the cost modeling is that um. Bonding saves approximately ten percent. Over the course of that thirty years, so um, it, it's. You know, that's when you're considering like which direction to go and often what happens is, as I, I was mentioning earlier is that. You know, you look at these, you know. This whole um plethora of needs and, you know, often what districts will decide to just say, okay, this is the thing we're going to bond for. And these things we're going to um budget for, you know, windows we can do, you know, facade a year or carpeting, painting, whatever. We can do those, you know, on a yearly basis, but, you know. Another project, we're just never going to be able to, to budget for, so we, we need to bond for that. And I'm not saying that, that, you know, we're not trying to lead the district down any one path, we're just trying to explain how other districts have approached this.
And also you kind of got at this point, David, but can you also just explain to the board? The differences in the cost estimations from last spring to this study and why this study is kind of more um. Relevant to our current discussion.
Yeah, so. Last in the spring, we didn't have this information, so what we used. We used just some percentages of net replacement value to cover um the deferred maintenance. So um, I don't know, Cam, if you, can you go back one slide? Caleb. So for the um seventy three million, sorry, the one hundred and twenty one million, the grand total there. It's, we didn't have that number, so last spring, we just had to use a percentage of net replacement value based on the APPA recommendations. And um, and I don't, uh, we haven't gone back and looked to see whether this is um. Much lower, much higher, but we'll, we will now be able to take this number, plug it back into the cost model. Um, and rerun those and they'll be, you know, now they'll be more accurate because we're not using uh just a plug number. Um, like we did in the spring.
The numbers are lower than the ones we carried in the spring as a placeholder, just for what it's worth, which makes sense when you think about. The school is in, uh, these schools are in slightly better shape than the average that we see in Vermont. Um, so. Kind of intuitive that way. But it's great to have these numbers, it's because now. Because one of the key differences was in the spring, we, because we used a percentage. It was a very even wash, buildings were all assumed to have a similar level of, of wear. And we can see from the report that that's not true, that's, it's, it, the, some buildings are in better shape than others. So having that additional le, level of information um gives you more options to be uh picky and choosy with how you approach. Um, repairs and uh other moves.
Well, it's great to hear we're not the worst.
Right.
Yay. He has a little peace of mind, but uh, yeah, I guess now's a good time, um, uh, if, if uh any board members here have uh questions. Emily has raised her hand.
Uh, yeah, so I, I guess first off, looking at the list and all the things that need to be um improved across all of our schools. It is a little bit surprising to hear that it's actually not as bad as it could be. These are some, these are some pretty significant things that our schools um are, are in need of. And I have, I have two questions. The first question, I, I, I think they're both easy ones, but the first one is, you know, with, with regards to faced and being at that forty nine percent for the FCI. It seems like then that's an indication that the recommended repairs. Might be a better investment of the community to actually replace those versus just hatching them. Given the state of, of what some of that, those, those recommendations are in, if I'm understanding that correctly. Because it's at that, that forty nine percent threshold.
When you, could you clarify the question? So when you say replacing. The, are you talking about replacing the building or replacing?
No, the, so, so looking at, looking at the slide on on page six. That, you know, Facetown's got the FCI score of forty-nine percent, there are the the three priorities. You know, levels and that the replacement costs, like the to do all three of the priorities is about seven million. But the replacement of all of those is fifteen million, which I understand is double. But given the age and the condition of some of the things that are happening in that school, it seems like a recommendation. Could be to consider, should we be replacing these things versus just fixing them? I just want to see if I'm understanding this right.
Let me clarify that the the seven million is for replacing all of the items on the list. The fifteen million is for replacing the building in total.
Oh, okay, okay, so I misunderstood that, okay.
And what what it doesn't include though is. Finding a site and a place to do it, you know. Because that's a wild card, we we can't really put a number on. Yeah, so that's what those numbers mean.
Okay, I I'm glad I asked that question then. I'm sure others, you know, members of the public might have thought the same thing. And then the other question that I have is in the priority ones across all of the elementary schools. There's a lot of code violations that are going on. So is there a concern that we could maybe not get insurance renewals? That we could get fined by the state if we don't address these things within a certain period of time, even though a lot of this stuff sounds like it's. Grandfathered from, you know, X, Y, and Z, but is that a concern that we should be considering when thinking about? Some of these these priority ones and and code violations.
Cam, you want to take this one?
Yeah, sure, so the way it typically works is you're in a legally occupied building. And you typically don't have to eat meat or upgrade to current codes until you do work. And there's a chapter in the in the code book that deals with this specifically, but in a nutshell. Once you start working in on a building, you start to do repairs, especially if they're at all kind of. Widespread, like if you're working on many, many parts of the building at the same time. You end up getting inspectors, people from this, from the State Office of Fire Safety, they'll come out on a weekly basis, they'll be looking at your building. And they will then at that point require you to make the upgrades. Because you'll need a new certificate of occupancy and you will have to meet the codes that are in. That apply today to those certain things. And it can be a little bit piecemeal, but generally, code violations have to be upgraded as soon as you do a new construction project, so. It's, you're not, I don't think in any danger of being shut down. To be honest, if there was something that was so. Important that it rose to the level of of needing to be addressed right away, we would counsel you to just to take care of that right away. Because it's a safety issue. So does that answer your question though? Ray, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to say that we've had the state fire marshal in all of the buildings. Doing full inspections over the last three years and he has not written up any any significant concerns.
And that and that makes sense to me, it's kind of like when you, when you, when you do a construction project. You know, right now, they walk around your building and it's a would be a political nightmare to close a building down midstream. But once you do a construction project, they kind of put on their glasses or their code compliance classes and they say. Well, you've got a chance now to to make some improvements, so they expect you to do it.
Thanks, Cam.
Cindy?
Cindy?
Yeah, I just wonder, and there's a few things that show every building. The wired doors is the is the one that just struck me the most, I think every building seemed to have wired doors. Is there things that we're going to be able to do where we'd get wired doors done in our schools? And and you know, the the economy of scale, something like that. There was that, there was the pee drains on all the links and they're just. That I wondered if there's any economy of scale.
Great, great, that's a great question, is there efficiency if we buy doors for all the schools? You know, is that? Cam's not sure.
It's always, I mean, yeah, there's always economies, you know, that usually the general is, you know, the more like. A project becomes more attractive, they get better pricing when they do volume, you know, and a contractor. You get more, you may get more contractors bidding, more subcontractors bidding and. You get, but it it really does depend because, you know, it could be. If you're doing, let's say, just Brookside and there's a lot of doors, you might get the economy scale that way. Just by doing one building, but doing all the doors as opposed to doing all certain kinds of doors across seven buildings. So it really depends.
Yeah, because you also pay for mobilizations, so if you have fifty doors in one building and two doors in another. You pay more because you have to pay for that mobilization that the building with with very little scope, so go both ways.
Any other questions from board members? Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Please, Steve.
Been typing like crazy. Should we just? I find this FCI figure a little confusing because it's maintenance costs versus replacing the whole school. But. You know, unless the FCI is very high, then shouldn't we just be going the replacement, the maintenance route? Am I missing something?
No, no, that's absolutely right, it's it's. You know, this, for example, the state. When I was on the two thousand twenty-three task force. And one and the report was to consider. You know, whether you would. In the state was using sixty-five or sixty-six percent, two-thirds depletion. An FCI of that amount, they would start to question whether they would even invest in that property. Because it's it's sort of the old car dilemma, right? At what point do you keep putting money into your old car or truck? And what at what point do you invest in a new one and and? It's interesting because there's a lot of consistency with the FCI ratings of, you know, the thirty percent, twenty percent, all that. And I I've done research to try and find out if there's any. Organization that says like, when should you replace the building, what FCI, and you cannot find that anywhere, nobody. Will touch that, we've heard seventy percent, we've heard sixty-five percent, the Navy, US Navy uses fifty percent. As their benchmark, but. It's a really, it's a very much a judgment call, but at twenty, you know, four percent, nineteen percent, you know, the kind of numbers. We're seeing here, yeah, the the. Reinvesting in the facility is the logical move.
What about that forty percent, is it's, is it still logical? I mean. I see that Harwood is.
The judgment call, Ashley, it's a, it's a cultural question, it could be different in different. Demographics, different. Communities of people will feel differently about this, you know, the the one thing I'll say is that. You can, you can make a judgment one way or the other, there is a point at which it doesn't make sense anymore. I often will use this, the analogy of putting airbags in a nineteen fifty-seven Buick, you know. Could you do it? Sure. Would it look weird in that steering wheel? Definitely. You know, so it it's. If you, if your buildings are not in terrible shape, I think there's a great case to be made to fix them. And but we work with some districts who have multiple buildings over fifty percent, some with buildings over eighty percent FCI. And in those cases, there's there's more conversation about replacement as a strategy because. At some point, it doesn't make sense to keep investing in those buildings, especially with the other gains you get from replacement. You're not in that camp.
Yeah, one factor that, one one thing that factors in, and I think Dr. Mike, you probably. You've lived through this in in your previous district and we experienced that Winuski is that when you do a massive renovation. You know, of a of a project and additions or whatever complicated. Project, it's very difficult for the people in the building to. Continue teaching because they're they're constantly being moved, there's construction around them, it's very disruptive, it takes a long time and it's. And that's, that's a factor that districts will consider, like, you know. They call it flip flop, flip flopping sometimes, but where where a district will decide to build a project in. The playing fields that they have and then. You know, when it's done, you just move the kids over and then you take the existing building down and turn that back into the playing fields and. You know, not in Vermont, it's very uncommon, in fact, I've never even heard of it in Vermont, but in other states, it's it's pretty common. And so that's, so those are the fact, that's a factor that people consider when. Considering, you know, complex expensive renovations and additions. But it's, it's, like I said, it's very unusual in Vermont.
And David's comments are exactly my experience, and what I would say is, it's also hard because. David and Cam and Caleb live in the world of not just architecture, but compliance, legal compliance, zone compliance. So I think of my last high school and my last home. The rest, the bathroom in my last home was built in the nineteen fifties, so my wife and I decided to replace it. We went in, we gutted it, we rebuilt it, everything was fine. We had a similar circumstance in the bathroom in the high school that was close to the auditorium, I had a board that said. You know, this is really antiquated, we should replace it, we should do something different, it looks horrible when we have. Parents come in, it's not serviceable anymore, the parts are old, so the board said, let's, let's go ahead and renovate it. And what we realized is because it was a public building and that's the key, it was a public building and it had to comply with the codes. There was not enough distance between the toilet stalls and the sinks under ADA regulations. So that project that should have taken six weeks took months and months and months. And inspection upon inspection from the code inspector who said. This does not meet the legal requirements, so that's how you end up with a project that requires more space. Requires a new building, requires replacement because you can't fit. What we would like to have as people living in the year twenty twenty-five with what the legal requirements are in a public building, which is a public school. Did I say that? Did that make sense, David?
Yeah.
Very well said. These repairs are very expensive, especially compared to what people might experience in residential construction, and it is for that reason. Also, the safety factor of working in schools, contractors have to build that in because they have to get. You know, background checks and have to keep separate and it's time consuming and all that, so, yeah, it's a great point.
And I think we saw that the summer and it was Steve Rosenberg who pointed out to me, like the people in the community who said. Why are we replacing the parking lot at the high school? Well, the parking lot was replaced because the state of Vermont has the three acre rule that if you have more than three acres of impervious surface, you have to have stormwater. And that led to a very expensive project, fortunately, the state was willing to pay ninety percent of that, but. We as a school district are a public facility, so we have to comply with those rules and regulations. That the state passes for a modern facility, so I think that's a good example, we just didn't want to replace the parking lot, we had to do some work. And once we started, once we put tobacco in the ground and started digging, we had to comply with all of those legal regulations.
Did anybody else here in the board members have any questions for TruX?
Well, I I guess it's not really a question, just thinking about that, you know, we, we have to, it sounds like we need to put under very careful consideration. When we're thinking about some of the improvements that are reckon, recommendations, say like priority one or even priority two. We need to be prepared that there there could be unexpected. Obstacles that happen, you know, Mike, when when you were talking about the the bathroom example in your last school. I was thinking about the the bathroom right across, at Harwood, right across from the auditorium, which, or the the gym rather, which. I think that's original, like that right there, if you try to do anything to fix that up, and I remember it being outdated when I was there in high school. So it's definitely outdated now, that that's not going to be an easy, that's an example of of something that would. Probably quite quickly snowball and 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 potentially several of the other recommendations in in the priorities. And especially some of the structural ones, like some of the the stuff we saw that's happening at at Brookside. And the stuff at at. Facetown, so those, those are, those are definitely things to to consider, they, they, they need to happen, but. There's unexpected setbacks that could happen as well.
Sure.
With this many buildings, this old, I mean, that's, anything could be the can of worms we don't expect. In fact, I'm sure there's contingencies that will be building into. You know, prepared for that.
And and I guess the last thing that I'll I'll say is as far as, you know, student disruption, I mean, I I remember the the last major renovation at Harwood. I was a student there and, you know, I I remember multiple classes in those those portable trailers. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the next step, you know, it's a good point, Emily, and and in fact, the. Numbers for Harwood, you'll see they're they're very large numbers, partly because the original core of that building is over sixty years old now. And so, and that includes all that infrastructure, all that underslam piping and everything, and we know that some of it's in in poor condition. You know, I I'll just say for folks, you know, the next step is really kind of. With this information, as David said, it's snapshot in time, the next step is really for. The district to take ownership of it and, you know, either with help or on their own. Turn this into like a capital improvement plan where you can start looking at some of these items, grouping them up. Looking at when they need to be done by, planning ahead, some of these could be combined into projects that make sense. And you can plan for and add contingencies for those eventualities. And that's really the utility of the information, that it can become a living document that helps you plan and organize. Your approach to maintenance. So I just wanted to offer that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we had originally. If you recall, there were three components to our original proposal, there was the configuration options, there's the facility valuation. And then there was what we call concept design, and so we've we've now completed. Phase one and phase two, and so that's another aspect of this, so. In our proposal, what we had contemplated doing or proposed doing was. With this information and we had developed various options. You know, district-wide options would be, and what other districts have done is they've picked the the top three that look like the the. Provide the best strategic direction and we've actually developed some designs for those. At a very high concept level and then had cost estimates done by a professional cost estimator. And then rerun, you know, do that and then rerun the the cost models so that you have a more accurate. Picture of what the cost impact of these different options are, and so that just, you know, when you're ready. You know, be happy to to work with you on doing that if if that's the choice. Just, but I'm just offering it as a reminder of of where we left off, yeah, where phase three was.
That's a great segue into next on the agenda, which it, which is next, next step, so I appreciate that. Looking at incorporating this information into a capital improvement plan. And I guess, Ashley, Steve, Cindy, what are what are your thoughts on how you would like to take this information from here? Do we have a desire to have TruX come back with a a presentation to the full board? Before thinking about our, the the path forward from here?
That's a good question. Do we need a presentation to the whole board? Probably we do, yeah.
I, I think it would be, you know, it doesn't, um, and I think we got a, a lot of meat done here in about a half hour. And I think if TrueX was amenable, I, I think that's important.
I do too. Um, I think it would be good to have it open uh to the whole board for more questions. Um, I think that would be helpful. Uh, I, I think that's our next step. Personally, I think our next step is take it to the whole board. And then be hoping to hear some more public comment. You know, I um, I'm hoping to get a little more from the public. I know that a lot of people have concerns about the expensive things and, and, and I hope that people will remember that what we are looking at today is in today's dollars and we have to remember that, that if we kick things down the road, they get more expensive. Um, and I know we're all aware of that. So, so yes, I think if TrueX is amenable, we'd like to have you guys back to um give a presentation to the board.
And, and I would suggest, I just know Steve has put out some information and really wants to do a good job of advertising this to the public. Uh, I know that uh our two local newspapers are also very engaged in making sure that our public is aware. So we have a meeting next Wednesday, but I think just for transparency purposes, it's just too soon. If we could do something on maybe October twenty-second, that gives uh TrueX Collins time to prepare, but it also gives us, you know, through all, whether it's the, the, our local media, but also the communications committee enough time to publicize this so our community is aware that this is being discussed and we have plenty of time. Uh, because I, I would like to see dozens of people who are tuning in to listen to this and to give comment to the board on what should be the next step.
Me too.
Absolutely. And I think if, if those who are on tonight uh for the public um ha- have follow-up questions from this meeting, I encourage you to, to email the full board uh or, or attend uh our, our upcoming meetings. Uh, I guess I have one question. Um, you know, I think after the initial phase of this um, this entire project, um, we, um, the, the board, the committee uh came up with, with a grouping of options uh to further, uh take a further dive into. Uh, and I, my, I guess my question is, is to TrueX here. How much do you think with this current information, these facility assessments, uh, how much of an effect, if any, would that have uh on those initial proposals that, that we, you know, I think maybe there was twenty, we narrowed it down to five or six? Um, do you think they're still in the same ballpark? Do you think there's any dramatic effect on those, those initial proposals as we solve them?
Well, I'd prefer to run the numbers rather than risk a guess.
Yeah.
Is, is that something, that, that's kind of where I was going, and I, I appreciate that. Is that uh something that can be done in advance of, of when we have you at, at the board meeting? Is that something, do we want to have a, you present to the full board and then maybe do that work and we take it into this committee again? And um what, what would you suggest?
You mean like rerun the numbers with this new information? But without going to the next without, without initiating phase three is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's, that could be done for sure. It's um, you know, my, my sen- my overall sense is that the rel- I, I, I don't think there's going to be a big difference and I, I'm, this is, I'm, I'm thin ice here, but that the overall difference between the options is not going to alter significantly, but I think that the total cost savings may go down just because the deferred maintenance numbers are lower than what we carried. Now, how much they go down, I don't know, but that's my general sense. But with, I, I, you know, if we're talking about for the twenty-second.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Cam.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think there might be a little bit of stretching too. As I said earlier, we used a, a multiplier from APPA to estimate deferred maintenance and it was even across all the buildings. And now that some buildings are higher and some are lower, some of the options, there is some stretching. And then, you know, some may, it may have more daylight between them. I'm sorry for speaking in metaphor. But like I said, don't want to hazard a guess without running the numbers.
Sure, I appreciate that. I just, you know, I, in a perfect world, I wouldn't want uh the, the narrowing down of options to uh have been, you know, to, to be kind of undermined by some updated assessments and some numbers. So I think it's really important that if this committee is going to uh come down to five, three, four, five, six options, uh, that they be the right ones.
Yeah, I think, I think that, I don't think that would be um, it shouldn't be too complicated to um put in, now that we have this new information, to just drop those in to the cost model and, and see what comes out.
Okay, and maybe I would just, uh, so we'll, you know, we can plan on you all coming to the full board, uh, taking questions from them and then, you know, if uh seeing, seeing what the board wants is, and the majority of the board would like to see, we can uh choose, choose the, choose that road ahead, whether, whether it's, it's, you know.
Choose a road. Some road ahead gets work done. Something that we are, I mean, I, we all know that this is a screwy time to try to make plans because we're not sure what, what, what happens if, with redistricting and with um possible aid from the state, although I'm certainly not holding my breath for that, for construction aid. But we cannot stop supporting our own schools. I completely agree with what Dr. Mike said um earlier about our schools are about people and students and learning and all these amazing things going on. We should be able to come to some agreement, I'm hoping, in the very near future about how we are going to press on. So I'm um, I am anxious to involve more of the public and I'm hap- I'm excited to have the board look at this presentation and look at this meeting we're having right now and then come to our meeting hopefully with more questions and more input. Because we do need to pick some paths, we need to pick some places where we're going to work on some projects. I think that's legit and how we're going to fund that and how we're going to do that has a ton of pieces attached. So, so I think for me, the next phase really is to have these guys, are you guys free on the twenty-second? Could you do a, you can zoom or comments, up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a full board meeting, so, and Dr. Mike will be away at the one to come, so that would, I, I would prefer waiting myself till the twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're done. I, I'm, I'm available for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Steve, did you have something?
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to ask uh if the committee members feel that there's something they should be doing between now and the twenty-second. It's, you know, it's three weeks.
Well, what I would say is, I think there are the bigger, but we need to look deeper at these. They have the, you're, when you said, Dave, there's the more comprehensive report on each of these little teeny tiny items that's going to come to us at some point, or is that down the line a bit?
I guess I would have to ask Caleb, Caleb has been the prime mover of that and we'll have to, I'll confer with him about when, when that'll be ready.
I mean, honestly, what we have now is, is, is definitely enough for the board to look at and to sort of get their head around it, I think. I mean, you don't need to know how many screws and pencils and whatnot you need. That's not what I mean. More like, if there's more info, obviously we'll want to look at that, but I think for the board, what we have in front of us, I will encourage everyone to really dig into. That's my piece.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a more digestible uh format. The report is also digestible, but it's a bigger meal.
Yeah, yeah. Um, all right, so.
I guess I would, I would suggest that just for other committee members, uh, you know, to answer your question, Steve. I think using uh this report, uh, maybe going back into the planning options that were, that were offered that were submitted last year uh through the TrueX work and, and maybe just kind of taking revisiting those options with, with, with this body of work in mind might be, might be a good first step too in advance of the twenty-second.
Yes, yes.
I do have, I do have one requi- I'm sorry, JB, I do have, I thought, I thought I caught, I thought I caught a good moment to check in. I do have one, I do have one request of folks, and this is both for folks uh at the school, on the board, uh, in the committee and even people who are listening in the public. If you have questions about the information that you're seeing, please funnel your questions through uh Dr. Mike or his, whoever he appoints to be that person. Um, just so that we're not in a position of having to respond directly to folks or be outside of the, the, the chain of command, so to speak. Because we know this is, there's a lot of information here, some of it is, is challenging and unfamiliar. Uh, and so we want to be able to support folks in getting the, the answers they need, but we just want to make sure we're going through the right channels.
Thanks, Kate. We, we appreciate uh all the work that you've done and uh as far as the public here, I just want to make sure that we have, that the district has as hard you want to do this work. Uh, and, and uh, you know, you're, you're looking at this, you're doing this through an absolute neutral lens. And so I, I remind the public that, to keep that in mind um when they.
That's a, that's a great piece of information. Um, I agree with that.
And I, you know, my, my goal is committee, we, we don't know what's coming down the pipe uh with the state. Uh, if we can uh work as much with, with TrueX, with the public to come up with some paths forward when things get difficult in the coming years and, and have that at the ready, then I, I think we've, we've done our job. So that's my goal.
Planning. We need more planning.
That's what I do.
Cam loves planning, don't you, Cam? It's your face.
Um, and, and for those members of the public, we didn't get a chance to, to hear your questions. Please, please uh send them on to, to, to the board. Uh, we will have another committee meeting, uh, certainly, and at that point uh it'd be nice to have more time open for public comment. Of course, there's always the school board as well. Uh, this is going to be an absolute collaborative process um with, 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 uh, with the residents and, and, and.
But for the public, I think JB, they should send, if there are questions related to this presentation, they should send them who, to Mike? And then, is that okay, Mike?
Uh, what, what I'll do is I'll come up with a full document, anything I get from the public, from the board, from anyone here, I'll put it in one single document and then I'll share it out.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Great. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna do this together. That's, that's the bottom line.
By hook or by crook, we're gonna do this together.
And also I just, I do want to echo something that David said at the beginning. And I want to thank Ray and his staff of all the facility directors in each of the schools who do a wonderful job every day to keep our buildings in great shape for our kids. When you walk into the schools, like I said, those, there's pictures of the work to be done, you don't see that. You see, you see a good place with kids who are working well and teachers who are doing a great job working with our students.
Yeah, Ray, Ray gets a shout out from me too. This is a, this is a hell of a load you've been holding up a long time. I swear to God, we're going to get something done, I swear. It's happening. He's just stoic as you.
All right, well, well, thank you, everybody. Um, I guess I'll be looking, uh, it's almost seven thirty, it's just about seven thirty, but looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Excellent.
Do we have a second?
Steve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, TrueX guys. We appreciate you. All right, take care.